Yes, I will go ahead and kick it off. That's the Heron City Administrator here for Westwood. I do have a staff report available in the meeting packet. I don't plan to go over that staff report with you. It is there for anybody to see. It really detailed out the process of how we got to tonight. For those who haven't necessarily been following along, or even for those who have been following along, it does add some detail about the process, about the milestones, and about how this election tonight came about. I do want to note that the RFP Review Committee that was created was an administrative committee that was appointed by me as city administrator, really so that I had the ability to vet some of these proposals before they came to you all. So, the committee was made of the people who are named in the staff report. It's two planning commissioners. Thank you to Commissioner Anne Holiday and Clay Holjam for serving on the RFP Review Committee. City Council members Holly Weimer and Jeff Harris, who are here in the audience, and Jay Carraza, who was or who is a Westwood Foundation Board Member. So, thank you to all five of them for serving on that capacity. Those five were the deciders in that they really were the voters. I served in a staff role as the support and a facilitator for the process. We also received support from our financial advisor, Columbia Capital. Again, all of this is in the in the staff report. And the financial advisor really assisted us in determining and reading through and deciphering the proposals that we received and comparing apples to apples as much as possible in terms of public benefit and as well as just the entire financial package that the teams offered, or at least put forward. So, that is how we got to today. I won't go through the details of any more of the backstory beyond that, but that really details out the overarching picture of the last, I'd say, probably four weeks or so. The RFP Review Committee was named in early July, actually before the RFP deadline came and went. And they have served really laboriously over, I'd say, a three-week period, four-week period to review and do homework and come together to review these and discuss in earnest the proposals. So, with that, there were several teams, six teams, that responded to the RFP. Those are named in the staff report. So is the evaluation criteria. That is pretty standard evaluation criteria. This is, I think, actually the exact same criteria that was used in the solicitation of park design firms, if I remember. I just kind of rinsed and repeated that criteria when we did that last year. It may even be similar or the same as what we did for the facility study, if I remember. So, I'm one who doesn't like reinventing a wheel. Once you have a good process and a template, I like using it. So, there wasn't really anything special about this criteria. It just seemed to fit what we are doing here this time as well. And then the sampling of the committee notes about the team that was selected are bullet pointed out here in the staff report as well to provide some indication and some illustration for residents and the general public about the things that they really liked about this team. So, I will leave it there. I'm happy to answer any additional questions that the Planning Commission has about the process. We are also receiving questions, really, for the next two weeks, I'd say, about the process, about the teams, and we will, and people can email those to me. They can email those to the INFO, the info email address, at westwoodks.org. They can email those to the city council members, who are the ultimate deciders of whether or not the city assigns our right to purchase the former Westwood View property to Hunt Midwest. So, we will receive those questions, and we will try to address those in an orderly way. Probably the next thing will be some sort of formal city communication that comes out in written form through the buzz that can detail out and will add things to our webpage as well, some of the frequently asked questions that we will be receiving. So, we do have a process of managing those. So, any questions that people have, please write them down and send them to us or get with me after the meeting, although probably not everybody's going to want to stay until the end of the meeting to talk. We do have several other items on the agenda tonight, and we will get to those. So, I guess I would invite any of the members of the public who don't want to stay for the rest of the agenda to, after the presentation is perfectly acceptable, to walk out into the hall. You are absolutely welcome to stay and listen to the conversation about the zoning ordinance. Happy to have you here for that. We do that at a public hearing tonight, as well as a new business item. But would invite you or allow you to to leave after the presentation if that is the only topic that you are here for tonight. I think that that's probably all the table setting I need to do, but is there anything else you'd like me to address, Chair Page?
I think the only thing I want to clarify for everyone here is, was all of this RFP process made public in the buzz, in emails, in communication to the public, that everyone under, like, that was put out to the public that we were going through this process?
Yes.
Okay. So, this is clear, and everyone was allowed the opportunity to submit an RFP, and these were the only ones. We received six responses.
Yes.
Okay. I just want to make sure everybody understands there wasn't any sort of hidden aside here. This was all made public and very clear to everyone.
Okay, great. So, with that, we'll invite Hunt Midwest to come up and to address you.
Thank you all. While Leslie's putting the slide deck up, and if you can't hear me, please, y'all, try to speak up. Well, I introduce myself, and like I said, we appreciate being here and going through the process today. My name is Brenner Holland. I'm Senior Vice President with Hunt Midwest. I run our residential core in, with a really good team. With me today is John Burkle with Hunt Midwest. John is an architect by training, and he is a, somebody's got really a lot of deep knowledge on land development. We have Greg Pinkel with Pinkel Williams. Greg is one of the principals with Pinkel and helped us put together this plan. And Judd Clausen with Phelps Engineering. Phelps does a lot of engineering in the Johnson County area, and we're lucky to have them on our team. As we get further along in the process, the civil engineering survey will be very important. You kind of listen to Leslie go through her process, and I just got to say, we appreciate the opportunity to give the RFP and be one of the people that made this proposal. It was professionally well handled so far, and we appreciate that. I know they had some good responses, and I know some of the people that were on some of the other teams, and I'm sure that their responses were also good. And then thank you to the selection committee, which I know a couple of you are on. That process had to be laborious and seems to have a bunch of different stuff to try to whittle it down into one. I would just say we're honored to be chosen out of that group and hope to show that we're collaborative and think we have a good plan, and we're going to put that kind of before you here tonight. So, if we go to slide two, I won't spend too much time on this, but we are, Hunt Midwest owned by the Lamar Hunt family, who yes, does own the Kansas City Chiefs. The three trophies on the right are fairly recent and happy about that. But, you know, we consider ourselves stewards of the Hunt family name, and we spend a lot of time talking about our three Rs, which are reputation, resources, and relationships, and think we can bring all three of those things to the table as we start talking about it and hopefully end up doing the development of this important site for Westwood. We've got a really big, a lot of people know, we have a really big industrial development core at Hunt Midwest, which includes Subtropolis, which is a full mindout space under Worlds of Fun. And also, you might see, we just did the Ace Distribution Center, 1.5 man's square feet, built a suit up by KCI Airport. So, all that's great, but I'm not involved with any of that. We're involved with our residential portion, which John and I spent a lot of time on. But we do single-family master plan communities, which a lot of people don't know, across the metro of Kansas City. We do multifamily in Kansas City. We just opened the Hudson down across from KU Med. It's a 226-unit apartment community on 1.5 acres. And we also do senior housing and some other things. I would say what we're looking at here is what we do. We platted over 7,500 lots in the Kansas City area over the last 30 years. Those were all single-family master plan communities. And when we say single-family, that is townhomes, patio homes, villas, the whole thing.
I'm sorry, we can't hear her. I'm sorry.
Okay. I'll try to maybe turn this way a little bit more. But we've done 7,500 platted lots in Kansas City and feel like this project is kind of really right up our alley. And that's to develop a single-family community, partly attached and partly detached. So, have a good team, and we're ready to get about it. Pinkel Williams, Greg is here. They spent a lot of time looking at this site, and obviously will spend a lot more time before awarded the assignment and are able to move forward. But I really think they've come up with a great site plan, and you'll see some more of that as we move through the project. John Gar also has a long history with Westwood. He's one of the principals there with Pinkel Williams. Had some travel that he needed to do, was already pre-arranged, so he's not here, but will be involved with the site as well. So, as we go to slide three, this is really the heart of the presentation. This is our layout of the site. You all know the site better than I do. It is the old elementary school site west of Jody Dennis Park. No part of the park or the church property of 5050 Rainbow is included on our site. So, it's just the old elementary school site. You can see on the west, where we're up against the neighborhood on the west, we let off with five detached single-family homes. Those homes would be, just like all of it, will be platted and sold. We will, we will just, you know, as we get through this process, we will have builder teams that we will put together, whether that's one builder or a couple of builders, to build the houses and build the single-family villas. This design is centered on what we call the green. It's a pocket park in the middle of the neighborhood. The green connects the single-family on the west all the way over to the Jody Dennis Park, and will act as the front door for the villas at the front on the green. Lots of things go into the green, and we can use it for a lot of different things. We're very excited to provide that here on this layout. As shown here, it's about 325 feet long, approximately 60 feet from sidewalk to sidewalk. So, about 19,500 square feet, or approaching half an acre, about 9% of the overall site. It's intended to be private open space, but as we talk through this, that does not preclude that we can't have some public uses for the site, and especially if there's things going on at the park next door. This community can program those together with the with the vote. So, we talked about the five single-family homes. Fronting 50th Street and fronting the public street, the new proposed public street on the south, we're proposing six larger villa, twin villa homes for 12 units. So, six buildings, 12 units. Those will front on the public streets, and their back doors will back up to the lanes, which we'll talk about more. Fronting on the green is six additional twin villas, a little bit smaller in size, and two duplex units. So, all told, on the site, it's 35 single-family units, some detached and some attached. I mentioned the, you know, the public road on the, goes north-south on the west side. We're proposing that that is in city right-of-way, and then that would connect down to a public street on the very south side that runs east-west, and it would tie back into 51st Street. Four 35 units. You can see that's really good connectivity. It gives two fullways out on public streets for the community. Most jurisdictions we work in, as long as you're under that 35 to 50 range, you can get away with one connection. We just felt it was important to make two connections back out to the public streets. Also notably, all the villas back up to lanes or alleys. We're proposing that those are private, and they will be very similar to what we did in North Kansas City in our Northgate Village project. It's kind of a neo-traditional design. It gets the alley, it gets the alleys and the garages off of that green area and lets them kind of be in the back on an alley where you can still get service trucks. You can put your trash out back there, but it's not on the very front of your of your house. So, kind of a neat element, again, following more of the neo-traditional alley-loaded set. We're very dedicated to landscaping and think that this project, you know, the give and take of the buildings and the open space will all be tied together by the landscaping. Very committed to the trees, to wayfinding, to hardscape as appropriate. And as we get down the road, you'll see more and more of that design if we're able to move this forward. One thing that's come up a couple of times, and I've mentioned it here already, but is, will there be a homeowners association? We don't see any way to not have a homeowners association on this site. And since our review committee interviewed, there was some conversation about that. But the green itself will be private. The lanes will be private. The villas are attached, and we're proposing that their maintenance provided so that the exterior of the buildings is maintained by the homeowners association, as well as all, any common areas, all the grass mowing, taking care of the trees and shrubs, that sort of thing. And the only really mechanism that we have to do that is a homeowners association. That way, you know, we know that the homeowners can pool their resources to build reserves for future situations that come up. The situations could include new roofs are needed on one of the villas. The alleys need pylon repair, or they need, you know, new lanes. I mean, this is over time, five, 10, 15, 20 years, and they'll have the resources to do that. It also allows the community to interact with the surrounding neighborhoods. They can form, you know, different committees, like social, social committees. What we do, when we establish those homeowners associations, is we create the covenants and the bylaws at the very beginning. And then as developer, we manage that process, manage the HOA through the development and through the home building, and ultimately educate and turn that HOA over to the residents at the appropriate time. We do have in almost all our communities committees, again, to kind of work with us as a developer to move that forward and then to be ready to take that over. So, we go to page four. Page four here is really just a kind of hyper-visualization of the pedestrian connectivity in the community. All of the public streets will have sidewalks. And then with the green, with the two sidewalks on each side, that will be the entry for people as they enter into their villa homes. But it also connects the whole site to the Jody Dennis Park and really creates that walkability. If I'm a young family that lives on the southeast side of the property, I can walk up and very easily get up to the new community center. So, very important on that. I'd also point out, these lanes are driven on mostly by people who live in those houses. So, the lanes also, when we have these kind of communities, act as pedestrian ways, good bike ways, too. They're slow and safe as far as the car traffic, and people can use those to walk. Also point out, on the trail, on the lanes themselves, we tie the lanes back to the public streets also at the end so that they're not dead-end, and they have ability to get a truck in and out, so people aren't driving. Figure out how to turn around at the end of an alley. We can go to slide five.
And Brenner, if I might, I want to make two points real quick to clarify. Number one, we will put these slides up tomorrow morning on the website, so they will be publicly available to everybody. So, we'll put those up. And the second thing is, I think that you mentioned a community center. There's no community center. There's nothing planned applied yet. Okay, great. So, I just wanted to make sure if anybody caught the word "community center", there's no such conversation. I think maybe it was just like, so.
I was thinking, I started with the park being the center of the community.
Great, okay. Thank you for that statement.
Thanks for clarifying. So, in this perspective, you can see, I thought it was a great idea by Pinkel Williams to throw up this white box to show scale. So, obviously, this is not going to be the architecture, what's going to be put out on the site. But this gives you an idea of what we're thinking, and that's two-story along the public streets and along the park to really match the neighborhood and not coming in with stuff that's three, four, five stories and just too intense for the area. Well, it also shows that we're willing, as we move forward, to collaborate with the stakeholders yourselves, with the surrounding neighbors, the residents, the city council, and staff to make the final decisions on what this architecture is and what it wants to be in order to fit in to the neighborhood. So, and that includes the single-family homes, but really more importantly, these villa homes that front out on 50th Street and front on the public street on the south side. You'll see, it was room for street trees. There will be room for pocket park trees, and then there'll be landscaping and wayfinding capabilities on the porch. One of the things that came up the review committee was, would we be open to street-level porches on the front of these buildings? And of course, that's something that we definitely want to hear about and consider as well. We think that's in our Northgate Village Plan, again, which is the neo-traditional project that we did. Front porches and patio will really activate the street, bring people out of their home where they can sit and interact with the neighbors, not just their neighbors in this community, but the neighbors who are going up and down these other public streets as well. So, the next perspective is the green perspective. Let's let you see the green pocket park there in the middle. Again, the front doors for the villas will come out to these sidewalks there. And one thing that does, it not only is, you know, it's beautiful to look at, but it puts people out in the front of their houses. It's, you know, the best security is people watching and paying attention to the surrounding area. It just naturally puts a lot of people when they're visiting. When they're coming, going from worker to school, they'll be out in that park and able to enjoy the landscaping, but also be able to get in and out of their units that way. It can be programmed for play, for passive park. As we get down the road, like I said, we think there's some other hardscape features that can go into this park. The other thing that can happen with this park is it can be a great resource for water quality and waterfall quantity for store water. And so, that'll be one of the things that we utilize, and the Phelps Engineering will be utilizing as we get into the civil engineering and planning goes with the civil construction. So, slide seven is, it's labeled "architecture", and we threw some slide, I almost didn't want to put this slide in because we are really dedicated to making sure we hear the public and we hear the stakeholders to understand the architecture that's important to Westwood. We have done our own drive-arounds and walk-arounds and have pulled a lot of pictures of houses all around the area. One thing we really have noticed and like is the heavy peak gables on a lot of the homes, what you see reflected here. The materials are stone and brick, stucco's, a lot of porches, and three-season rooms that face the street. So, those are the things that we're going to, you know, want to absorb, want to get the public's input on, and ultimately have Pinkel Williams and our builder team create a unique, but collaborative elevation that will fit in with the neighborhood. And so, that's, that's really, and I'll come to the last slide. I just want to say that, you know, we recognize this is a unique opportunity. It's a unique property. It's not often to build a neighborhood within a neighborhood, and we're excited about being collaborative and taking that forward. There's, you know, it's not really something for the planning commission to have to deal with, but there's a large land price on this, which is what's driving some of our discussions about density and trying to make sure that we get enough units that we can have a product up there. We think the, you know, like I said, the villa homes are going to be in the 800 to the million-two range. Single-family homes might approach a million-one to a million-five. And that's the way that we're going to be able to sort the land price and then the assignment fee that we're proposing to the city in Westwood. We'll go in detail later, but, you know, and get some more inputs, maybe from Johnson County and then some of the taxing jurisdictions. But it's a way to get this property back on the tax rolls and start giving the city some money that they can do with it. I will leave it up to Leslie, but we're open to questions if you have any, and otherwise, look forward to future presentations as well.
Can I pull in just a few details? Great. And then, yes, happy to answer questions, I guess, either of us are one for the team here. My first question is for you. Would you just clarify the timeline that you are thinking these will come online?
So, we close, give the assignment and close on the property at the end of this year. We would probably spend the next five. Yeah, sorry. So, if we get the, if we would get the assignment at the property, you know, toward the end of this year, October 28th, is the closing day, we would put the professional consultants to work. That's probably a five or six-month period of getting a plan ready to submit to the city. And then we go through your full entitlement. So, I believe you're going to say we're going to rezone the property, and then we have to get the final plat approved. Probably the final plan that goes in that shows landscaping and trees and that sort of thing. So, that will all happen. That could take, that whole process could take through 2026. It's kind of what we're showing up at. Our first submittal for the RFP. If we can speed that up, we definitely will. You know, time is money, and we want to get to market as soon as we can with the lots and with the homes, basically. And then we think that the homes will take, you know, the single-family homes, there's a good chance those might all start right away in that first year, being late 2026 or early 2027. And then we're probably a three-to-five-year build-out on the rest of the villas. So, that's just a, from a practical sense, it'll take probably three to five years to get those built. Again, might be able to speed that up a little bit, but get to get those built and then sold as well.
So, thank you. You've checked a lot of things off my list, so I appreciate that. A couple other things I want to make clear. The city's involvement really is assigning our right to purchase the property. So, right now, the city is under contract with the school district, who is the property owner. We have been under contract with them for the last two years. Yeah, two years, to purchase the property. We are not able to do that, and so we are looking at the school district's request for somebody who can be a partner, really only for the assignment action. Though unlike our relationship with Carbin, where it really was a joint development, this is us allowing a private group to purchase the property privately and develop it privately. So, there will be a difference in the term, in the way that the relationship worked and how communications worked and things like that. If the city council decides to assign our right to purchase the property to Hunt Midwest, then it will be a private transaction. So, then Hunt Midwest would come to the city like any private property owner, somebody who wants to build a home, somebody who wants to redo their business, or, you know, like Midwest Transplant Network came to us and wanted to add on to their business several years ago. They will be submitting their applications for planning commission review at that time as a private property owner, not as a joint city project. So, I just want to make sure that that is clear. It will be different than how Carbin was handled. So, that is the extent of the city involvement. In terms of changes or what's being approved now, the only thing for approval at this time is whether or not the city will assign our right to purchase the property to Hunt Midwest or whether we will terminate the agreement and the school district sells the property to somebody else or does whatever it wants to do with the property. So, this is not an application for zoning. This is not an application for site plan review. This is a proposal that we are essentially vetting in a competitive process to see what buyer, potential buyer, the city feels has, or the RFP Review Committee, which is representing the city in this way, feels is a good idea for a project. There's nothing that requires Hunt Midwest to do this exact project. The only thing that requires them really to do that are the three Rs that they said at the very beginning, Brenner said at the very beginning. Reputation is probably the biggest one. So, this is really their idea. This is their proposal. This is what we would assume they would bring to the planning commission several months from now after they closed on the property. If the city decides to assign our right, they would come with applications that would look something like this after they do a public engagement process to determine what exactly the site layout looks like and what will be in the planning applications. I don't know if that is confusing or not, and maybe there's a better way to state it that you all can clarify as you ask questions and make your own points, but I do just want to try to make that clear. They, they can change any of this, but it still has to go through public hearing processes, public processes later, when they actually get to the point of submitting applications to you. This is not prejudgment of applications. This is just an anticipation of what might come before us. The only other point I'm going to make is about the financials. The only other point I'm going to make is about the financials. Uh, part of what the review team looked at was the financial benefit to the city in terms of. TIP, in terms of any sort of public incentives, in term uh, in terms of the uh, assessed value that could come from the development. Hunt Midwest, as well as the other teams, provided varying levels uh, and details uh, about what their proposals would do. We did bet that because that is not a component that the planning commission has purview over. That is not a part of tonight's presentation. Hunt Midwest will come back to us in the same room probably next Thursday night uh, six P M. And they will present those details as well as some additional answers to questions we'll get over the next week at that time. So the city council is responsible for for the financial uh, health of the city and the financial decisions for the city. So that is why those details will come later to that body. So I want to make that clear as well, but they were certainly a component in the review and selection process. Um, okay, I think I'm, I think I'm done. Is there, are there any questions that you all would like to ask at this time?
Um, I was wondering if you could tell me a little bit more about the uh, public engagement process, how you foresee that going or planning on. Running that process. Um, and what sort of feedback are you hoping to get, like specifically architecture typologies? Uh, sizes of units, et cetera.
That is a good question. We uh, we we planned to hold almost like a charrette type uh, environment where we put easels around the room. Uh, you, I I I know this uh, commission has a lot of experience with these sort of things. Um, but you know, maybe there's stickies, we got to figure out how to do it, but a way to get input from the public in a uh. Yeah, collaborative kind of working way, not just a presentation, but actually here's some easels. You like this architecture? Do you like this architecture? Are these porches better? Um, you know, should the, should the partnering program with this or not, uh, you know, the private park there in in the middle of the community? Um, you know, with going into it, as Leslie said, you know, we're not looking for an approval of this exact layout right now. So as things happen and flow with that design, you know, we're willing to to be collaborative and look at that. We feel like we got to get pretty close to this to make it a viable project. So um, most of what we're going to be looking for collaboration on is architecture and uh, inputs from that standpoint. Uh, you know, may maybe some of the uh, even the landscaping or some of the stuff we do around the periphery of the site, but uh, that will be the answer.
Um, what is the general range that you believe that the units in square footage would would range now?
Um, that's a good question. Probably on the homes, they could go anywhere from, you know. Uh, three thousand to fifty-five hundred on the detached homes. Um, and I had some uh, the the, we've shown the villas in here as boxes. Uh, without any really floor plan design. It was kind of our intent is to um. Where we can, at least on the twin villas, is to get some masters down. Uh, and then get some uh, secondary bedrooms, uh, either up or down in the basement or or upstairs. Um, but I, you know, I really foresee those, the, you know, the smaller building units that are along the pocket park, probably being in that twenty-five hundred, maybe. Twenty-one hundred square foot range, uh, not including basements of, you know, if we end up with basements on the project. Um, and then the largers might end up at that twenty-five hundred, uh, even thirty-five hundred. There's room to do that on the side. Definitely, you know, higher end luxury type project.
And then um, with the HOA, I know you you mentioned that there would be covenants and bylaws created. Would there be any restrictions? I know some communities have age restrictions or other restrictions. Anything you anticipate there?
No, not at all right now. We're really, uh, you know, we we had discussed, you come into the fifty-five plus community, but really we can. See the demographic for this site, just like you're seeing all throughout, you know, the the tear downs and rebuilds that are happening in your community. It's a, it's a, it's going to be a wide range of people I think that would be really interested in living here. You know, with uh, with the, you know, one of the best school districts in the state, uh, public school districts in Bishop Meage and Pembroke. And uh, all the country clubs around. I mean, you're gonna, you're gonna move downs from Mission Hills. You're gonna have move ups from. Uh, Fairway and Roland Park and some other Westwood homes that want to be here. You're gonna have lock and leave people that want one of these villas so that their maintenance for is provided on the outside. So you're driving up to the airport and be gone for two weeks and not worry about it. Uh, and I think you with the elementary school there, you'll have some young families.
Um, I think the other questions I have are around the the green space, the green. I know you mentioned that it could host some public events, but that would be primarily for the residents of that community. Am I understanding that correctly or?
Yeah, I think um. The collaboration will help enforce some of that as well. Um, it is, it does have to be maintained by the HOA, so I don't think the city wants to take that on and. You know, it'll be irrigated four or five times a week. It'll have heavy landscaping and the city's not going to want to take that and maintain that and pay for that. Um, the residence is their front yard for many of these residents who'll come in here. So they're going to want to make sure it's done. Uh, you know, on a weekly, bi-weekly basis to make sure it's looking good. Uh, and so we feel like it's important that the HOA will make sure that happens. Uh, so that the, the issue then is how do you uh, make it accessible to the public? If the kids are walking home from uh, the elementary school and they cut down, they cut through this committee, uh, through this community and through the park. That should be allowed to happen, right? They should be able to get through there and get to the east side of here and go over to the Jody Dennis Park and enjoy the park. Um, and then on the other hand, if uh, if general public's coming in and tearing up the side of the landscaping, the homeowners association. Should be able to uh, limit how much that's done. So um, I, you know, we've had, you know, great kind of inputs that. You know, that if the parks really start being utilized for some public events, you know, do you run a string of tents down this park and then expand into this area? And I think that'd be great ideas.
I don't like keeping a person asking questions that I wrote down a lot while you were talking. So there are obviously these privately owned streets that will be, I assume, maintained by the HOA. Uh, actually, my my mother lives in a similar HOA, so they're paying to redo their streets. So that would be maintained by the HOA, not by the city of Westwood. Is that correct?
That's what we're proposing right now. Um, is that those alleyways, the east west alleyways will be uh, maintained by the owner, owned by the owners.
You know, the commissioners have questions, so I don't ask all of them.
I mean, you mentioned that it's related to our elementary school. Um, when you were submitting proposal or as you're thinking about the site. Um, how how did you think about that unique feature of of the area uh, with the site and how you laid out, how you planned to use it?
Um, you know, like, in personal experience, experiences of our communities that we've built, these elementary schools are not just schools, right? They're, they're really our centers of the neighborhood. So our our biggest way to take advantage of that is making sure people can walk out of their front door or their back door. And easily uh, get up to fiftieth street, be able to walk up to the elementary school. Uh, and and that's really, you know, that's that's the main thing, what we've tried to do. We also think that having um. These villas, which will be different sizes, will also create, um, I know it doesn't sound uh. Uh, attainable for a lot of people, but a seven or eight hundred thousand dollar townhome. Uh, might attract some young families that can't get to that neighborhood for the new homes. Uh, it can also pull people out of some of the older homes that might want to move up. And create openings in those older homes for people of young families to move into too. It's funny that for you, this elementary school at one point was going to create enough kids, you know, to go to it. So they wanted to shut it down and now it's one of the premier elementaries in the area and uh, and that demographic just keeps rising. So that's a testament to who wants to be in Westwood.
Uh, other question I have is about just the the Jody Dennis and uh, park and the fifty-fifty spot. There, there's nothing, I just want to make it really clear, there's no part of what you're proposing that would be on those properties, that's just on the school property.
The the only thing would be is if we end up with a sidewalk on the east side there, you know, do we extend it a little bit into the park to make sure that it's tied in? Or, you know, if there's a ramp or stairs or something like that, the, all that will be worked out with the city, you know, if not, we'll just pull it back under our sign. And we're, you know, I know this is not the the financial meeting, but we're not requesting TIF. We think that this site will provide some funds if the city wants to apply those funds to the park, that they can do that. I would say they can put it up to city council.
Other questions? I encourage planning commissioners to think about maybe what any of your neighbors might want to hear answered this evening. As you're sitting up here, I encourage questions. I know this isn't our neighbor's opportunity to ask questions. They can do that at city council, but. There's something in your head, there's probably, it's probably likely in somebody else's head out there.
Yeah, I'm just looking at this and I'm thinking, I know it's conceptual and I appreciate the thoroughness put into it. I wonder maybe as you start to evolve it. Thinking about the car and how, I think what I love about our neighborhood is that the car is kind of secondary to the home.
Yeah.
And so just looking at this plan, being mindful of the driveway and how it interacts with the front of the house, um, assuming these are all two car garage villas and single family homes.
Well, the single family homes, I think you'll see some probably uh, three car garage, but then again, that's not, you know, hasn't been determined. Um, the villas are all, to make these work, will all be two car garage.
Right.
And I think to your point, that's what we've tried to do with the alleys is remove them from the front, you know, instead of putting a big street out there, it's got parking on both sides of it for that. Uh, let these be on alleys where they need to park in the, in their garages and make an effort to do so.
So I'm going to clarify too, the only units composed that have a front facing garage. With a driveway on the front of the house are the five single family detached homes on the west side. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. Everything else will have a back loading garage. I've contemplated here and no um. Front vehicular access to the front of the house, for the front of the home.
It's more of a comment, not a question. Uh, we did a survey this past year, an email survey, mail survey. And one of the biggest responses we got back was, um, you know, residents were concerned about housing affordability. Um, you know, real estate has gone crazy, especially this part of Johnson County. Um, so I appreciate, you know, you have to make it make sense for you financially. Um, I just, you know, the, the, it kind of the sticker shop of what you're proposing to price the villas at. Um, I don't know, but that to me, I think, I think it's a beautiful plan and I like the, I guess the. The access to the public park versus the semi-private of the green. The alleyways, I think are a great idea to get, you know, garages kind of hidden. Um, but that is my only, that's my feedback. I um, I like that we're starting to see more multi-family options in Westwood, but uh, yeah, I think. But it has to make sense for you. So I get, I get that. You have to maximize your units. Um, other than that, that's, I think it's, I like it so far.
I appreciate that and completely understand uh. You know, that also is part of not partnering with the city with incentives and creating any of that kind of attainability. So um, I'll also say that, you know, we, you know, we'll make the effort to uh. To to make the prices as marketable as possible and that usually means lower. Uh, and so, but just, we also want to be transparent. We talked about the three Rs and and. You know, I can come in here and tell you those villas are going to be four hundred thousand or five hundred thousand dollars. They're not going to be in two years. It's just in a way. That's where we are right now with uh, with uh, with building and trying to get this square footage and to. Uh, to be able to absorb the land costs, you know, if you think about the three and a half million we'll have into this, there's thirty-five units. We'll have a hundred thousand dollars with the land cost, day one, without any infrastructure. So it's uh, you know, you just do those ratios. I know a lot of you are in uh, planning, construction, uh, real estate. And it's uh, it's just how it ends up coming home. So if if this is something that the city's interested in, we're definitely, we want to do it. We think it'd be a great project. Uh, and again, I think the the attainability side comes when you give people options, you know, if you're, it's. You're you're putting units out there, putting new housing into Westwood and maybe that creates somebody moving out of their four hundred and fifty thousand dollar house or their. Three hundred thousand dollar house that lets a young family move into there, uh, because they've got equity in that and they could move up to a lock and leave situation. That's the only response.
Do you foresee any road closures associated with construction on this, either on the north or the south or, because there's quite a bit of land there for staging and everything?
Yeah, I don't, you know, I don't, oh, I doubt it. That that really would come down to maybe some short closures for tiny utilities and like sewer lines.
There may be some just very short land closures like Brenner had mentioned. Uh, where we're trying to connect into a utility or have to access something, but. Uh, ninety-nine percent of the time, those roads are open and and uh. Uh, and you know, construction access, it's got to be something that we've got to talk about uh, with the city and. Find out, you know, what makes the most sense as far as construction vehicles coming to and from the site and how that works.
You know, we're, we're required by law all these days to do swift lands with your stormwater pollution prevention uh, plans that uh. So again, you line the site with uh, ways to keep the water in and uh, you can also do construction fencing, trying to keep. Contractors and trades out of, you know, out of the the main streets there. Like you said, um, you know, you can stage this where you build the north half. And you can stage on the south half of like the villas and the park and then swap that over. It is an infill location though, so I mean, it's a, yeah, it's a good question.
I think you mentioned that it would take three years to build these. Is that right? Three to five years? Is that, and you said you'd start with the, on the left here, the single family home, so there's no phasing associated with this. It's, it's.
Well, like I said, we we probably would uh, phase like, you know, just naturally you phase the villas. And you'd probably do like a north side or a south side first. Uh, and and get those going and start marching through those. Uh, the idea being that you get some finished out, be able to start getting residents and sell some of those and then move on to the the next phase. Uh, more than likely, we put all of the infrastructure in. Uh, definitely the main uh, public roads would all go in at one time. The sewer and water and all those utilities. Um, the lanes might go in and and maybe not the finish, you know, top coat asphalt. But uh, and do that later, but you, you know, you're gonna, because you're gonna tear some stuff up during construction, but mostly the infrastructure will go in. Right away.
I know that um, I I think the the public will probably have some conversations about tree preservation. Um, can you talk to us about that? And I mean, looking at this, it's probably going to be a little difficult, I would assume, for some of the tree preservation. But do you have a plan for that in mind?
We will have a plan. We don't really have a direct plan right now. I think, you know, your your instinct is correct, correct. If you're going to get some density on here, most of the interior trees are probably going to be uh, have to be taken out. We look at uh, you know, that comes down to the grading plan. Um, uh, and and the really the life expectancy of the trees, you know, is it worth it? Is it eighty years old and it's about the end of its life anyway? Um, you know, you get into the drip line of some of these trees with any of your grading or you, your utilities and you're probably doing, you know, a lot of damage to the tree as well. So, so if he sees a tree, it might be twenty-four inches or thirty-six inches in caliber inches in at the base. The impact of you, you're impacting that tree way far out to its drip line, which is way out there. And so yes, we we think that uh, and the strategy here is probably going to be to plant a whole bunch of trees on the backside. Uh, to make up for that, that will be viable uh, trees for the next eighty, you know, hundred years.
Any questions?
You mentioned, you mentioned, oh, sorry, go ahead.
Oh, I just wanted to kind of ask you for a minute about, you know, we had a, I'm going to mention the community survey and. Seemed like the two things that came out that were really important was green space and and more housing and then connectivity. Could you talk about what you saw in the survey or how that relates to your site plan?
That I will say that the green space directly grew the green and how we started, really started with that as the base of the community. To see how much practically you could put in there and still connect to it. Uh, and then how, but how does it also become uh, useful and useful at the same time? That really was like I said, the center of the whole design was based on on that green. And being able to come out of your single family home and walk straight across to the Jody Dennis Park. And that, you know, that is a a relatively good sized area and I don't know what happens on fifty-fifty rainbow, but. Altogether, that's a, that's a nice sized park for for a community and for the the surrounding neighborhood. And properly programmed, it could be really an asset for not only this community, but for the others. So um, you know. To me, part of the the green space is making sure the city has some of this back on the tax rolls and, you know, get some money in the coffers to help work on things like that too.
You you mentioned builder selection briefing, because you can just repeat what you said and then maybe if there's more to share about that or how how you see that happening.
Uh, we've had interest from several builders already, um, some of which uh, applied for uh, or submitted on the RFP. We'll do an interview process and we'll find the builders that, or builders that uh, closely match the, you know, what we're trying to accomplish here. Um, I I really foresee that as being probably one or two builders to be able to control, you know, this tight space. Uh, and then maybe that there's one, two or three builders on the detached homes that could be going on while, while we're doing the villas. But the villas is going to want to be one, maybe two buildings. And the the builders that have reached out to us are doing work in the area, doing work in first ring suburbs. Um, so we'll start checking. Uh so we'll start checking those boxes, they have the viability, they have the relationships, they have to prove that they have the uh uh. The same values that we have coming to the site with, you know, we're gonna build a quality product product and be able to demonstrate that, so. And and we know they're out there, there's there's ten or fifteen that I'd feel comfortable with, and we'll narrow that down to one or two.
Uh what would my neighbors wanna know, traffic, have you considered traffic at all, additional traffic, it would rain?
Yeah, um it obviously it will add some cars to the local roads. That's another reason we thought it was uh really important to get access out on the fifty first street, not just fiftieth street. Uh to be able to break that traffic up. Um and then there's also on the northeast side, the the one alley that comes back out of fiftieth as well. Um if there's, you know, it's gonna be way less than anything else that was gonna go there and then with with the commercial spaces. And it's gonna be less than even like an elementary school would have been an impact on the site now. Joe, it reminds me that the elementary school is up there, so it still is impacting this area. Uh and so um, you know, like, we just think that with this design, you're just not gonna have that many cars and. We all know that the work from home today, tra peak traffic counts have dropped a lot in the last five years, really since COVID. Uh so uh just don't be, there are thirty five units, it's just not that many.
Was there any consideration to adding smaller units? Or, you know, I don't know if that would be financially feasible for you, but I don't know, twenty five hundred square foot starting off. Uh it it seems a lot, uh but to Commissioner Keizer's point, like maybe considerations for smaller, more affordable units? I don't know if that's been done or if it's possible to consider in the future, um but I think that would, that would help. Provide even more options for how they, um just a comment and a question, I guess, would.
And I do think, I mean, I'll just chime in here, I think that there is, I was just saying for you to think about ways to maybe have something in that fifteen hundred to two thousands or twenty one hundred square foot. Maybe popping a few of those in there, because I think there is a demand for that in this part of town that that you maybe might not see in a more southern part of Johnson County. Um I don't know that people moving into Westwood are looking, I mean, yes, there are people that want a huge house, but I think there's also people that would be fine. Kind of right sizing to a smaller sized house and consider eighteen hundred to twenty one hundred a sufficient place to kind of downsize to.
Well, we'll definitely keep that in mind as we move forward, I think uh that's one of the reasons we wanted to keep the two triplex units in there, there is some opportunity to maybe take those units down a little bit. Uh we could get some, you know, some question whether or not we need to try places. Um it just works out really efficiently to be able to put those triplexes in there, but maybe there is opportunity there to to bring someone's down a little bit as well.
There are no other questions, I wanna I wanna sum, just summarize what I understand, this is next going to go to city council, correct? So city council can determine whether or not this is assigned to this group. Um and uh there will be no, there's no action for us to the planning commission. Uh we're just here to hear, the financials will be outlined at the city council meeting in more detail. This is a similar presentation, I assume, we'll have there for the city council members. Uh the only action is if this is assigned, then at some point we will probably see you again if it if it's assigned to talk about zoning and other pieces of parts of this. And get public input and all of those things, but that if it was assigned, it not happened until twenty twenty six, is that a correct summary? Wanna make sure we wrap that up.
Yep, so uh Hunt Midwest, as well as the other teams, they all know and they all agree to. Closing or being able to close without land entitlement, which means they all knew, including Hunt Midwest. That this, they gotta put the money first before they know they have the right to do what they want on the property. And that's just part of the risk, but also I think what we saw from six proposers, okay with that, that Westwood is a desirable enough place. To put out three and a half million dollars for uncertainty about whether or not they can even get the land entitlement that they need. So absolutely, you all would have to take some action on this plan in the future if it looks like what it does here and it's not. Um less less tense than this. Uh and the the question about smaller units, those are all things that you all as a planning commission have the right and the uh the responsibility. To weigh in on when they get to the application phase. If the city council determines that they want to assign the city's right to purchase the property to Hunt Midwest. I just don't wanna, I know I'm overstating that, but I think it's so important, the action here is not yes or no on this plan. The action is whether or not the city council wants to assign the city's right to purchase the property to a private property owner. To then be able to have the privilege of bringing you all an application in the future, after they own the property outright and only then. There will be a little bit of time for due diligence, like that anybody would have, if they buy a home and have, you know, what is it, standard sixty days or something to, you know, to do some due diligence to close. Typically with commercial projects, you have a little bit more than sixty days, uh but in this case, they really don't. So they will be going through due diligence, just like any private property owner who would be wanting to buy a house in a in a private transaction would. Uh but that can only really happen after the city council determines whether or not they would even wanna assign their right. The assignment action then would happen if they do decide that they want to do that, and then that's really when Hunt Midwest would be able to do due diligence. Um with the school district and really investigate the site and make sure that they feel comfortable taking it. Are there any other questions that you all have about process or what to expect next, what the community can expect next? Okay, then the last thing I'll say is uh we are still receiving um and accepting questions that we can answer in some sort of an FAQ. Or some sort of a follow up written communication that we send out to residents. And the city council will also have a similar meeting, but with uh more detail and different details next Thursday evening. Please submit any questions that you have that can be addressed at that time or before then. I guess that's more to the public than than to you all, but you're all welcome to some of those questions as well, if you think about them later after tonight's meeting.
Thank you all, appreciate it, it's a lot, it's a short time.
Oh, okay, I'll say it again, really quickly, I'm sorry, someone just asked to say out loud the price range again, uh the villas were eight um eight hundred to a million. And the single family homes, he said, would be in one million to one point five, right?
All right, thank you all, and again, you're welcome to stay for our public hearing on the zoning regulation, but the only other items that business we have.